We are, sorry I was late, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, no, it's quite all right. We are going to call it a order. Our open session of the City of Crescent City, this special meeting for January 22nd, 2018. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kaim?
Here.
And Mayor Inscore.
I am here. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Greenow, would you please lead us?
Absolutely. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Council, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Nothing to report out of closed session.
Very good. Move into general public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City, comments of public interest or matters that are on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments need to be directed towards the entire Council. Any comments that are not at the microphone will be out of order, not part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and either city or county residency for the record, and limit public comment to three minutes. Yes, public comment? Yes, Richard?
My name is Richard Miles. I'm a resident of the city. I have two hopes for this spring. I would hope that the city would have a town hall meeting and invite the public to it to consider three things. For a long time, the city has talked about a master plan for the downtown area. They've talked about it for a number of years, and actually, nothing has been done. I think it's important for the business community and local economy that that meeting takes place with public input. Also, maybe because of Martin Luther King's Day and the meeting at the Methodist Church, that there's a number of items that I think the public, what I heard at that meeting, that the city should address too. Also, I would hope, I discussed this with Eric just a minute ago, in the downtown area, there is a number of tree wells, especially around the bank in the new sidewalk area, that are filled just with gravel. I'd like to suggest that the city hire an arborist to come up with a master plan for trees downtown, because you've got a number of those berry trees that the businesses just hate. Also, for a number of years, the city has to knuckle the big-leaf maples. And they'll constantly have to do that. Right now, if you walk downtown, you'll see a number of what are known as suckers growing out of a number of trees. And there are some of them that actually need to be topped. One good example is at the Elks Building. By hiring an arborist, you could get a decent tree list to plant downtown that wouldn't crack the sidewalks. Looks like my time's up.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Appreciate the input. Any other general public comment tonight? All right. Seeing no other general public comment, we will close public comment. We do not have any reports and presentations tonight, but we have some items on our consent calendar, items one through seven, the special council meeting minutes from January 8th, the warrant claims list for December 30th through January 12th, the payroll report for January 6th through January 12th, the budget-to-actual report for December of 17, the quarterly cash and investments report for October through December of 17, the investment policy update and the resolution associated with it, 2018-03, and then the debt policy update and the resolution 2018-04.
Pardon me. Pardon me, maybe you were just about to say this.
Yes, there is one more. Number eight, CDBG food bank subrecipient agreement.
Next page there.
Thank you. And number eight, CBDG food bank subrecipient agreement. Thank you.
It's a long list.
It is a long list. All right. Do I have any public comment on our consent calendar? Yes, Mr. Miles?
I really have a concern about funding money to the Found and Resource Center as a food bank. And I'd like to tell you why. Unlike RHS, they don't have the refrigeration or the storage space for a food bank. I think it was a mistake of the city not to fund RHS. I can't see how the Found and Resource Center with the limited space can actually provide a food bank. And I don't think, I'd like to see their proposal, how they're going to provide those services. As a recipient of RHS's services, I think they do a good job. And I think it was a mistake of the city not to fund RHS.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on our consent calendar? Bring it back to the council. Any of these items that the council wants to address?
Yes, I move to approve items one through seven.
All right.
I'm going to pull item number eight.
All right. We have a desire to pull item number eight. Have a motion to approve consent calendar items one through seven?
Second.
Have a second with Mr. Greenow. All right. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kaim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Very good. Number eight?
On the agreement itself, on page four, which is page 72 in our packet, under section five, payment, there is a dollar figure enumerated there, $239,147, which is the correct number. However, in the narrative, it says $158,140, which is incorrect. So that needs to be corrected.
And the narrative, where in the narrative is that?
We're on page four of the agreement itself.
Okay, I see that.
In the paragraph titled, "Payment." Paragraph starts and expresses the agreed-
Oh, 150. Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
Also, on, let's see, it's page 82 of our packet, no, excuse me, page 80 of our packet, which makes it, makes it page 12 of the agreement. I just had a question. Under section five, State Non-Discrimination Equal Employment Clause, after taking our EEO class not too long ago, I noticed that the wording in the paragraph seemed to me to be a little dated. I realize in Attachment A, it is a little, a little more up to date, but it still doesn't express all the terms that are described in Government Code 12940, which include genetic information, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, or military and veteran status. It includes discrimination based on a perception that the person is a member of a protected class or is associated with a person who is, or is perceived to be a member of a protected class. I just thought that we should maybe update that verbiage to bring our clause into compliance. I may be off on that. I just noticed that it didn't include all of the current terms.
I haven't looked at this myself. I would tend to agree with you. This is obviously required language for this agreement, and sometimes those required boilerplate clauses get transferred from time to time without getting updated. So I think it should be in compliance with whatever the state law is at this point. And I think that we can go ahead and approve today with the understanding that we will go back and update that language to follow or track the state law language. That would be fine with me?
That would be great.
Okay.
With that, I would move that we would accept this agreement with the noted corrections and additions.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any, any public comment regarding item number eight, CBDG subrecipient contract with the noted correction? Okay. Staff have anything that they want to weigh in on? Mr. Weir, Sliver, anything that you'd like to address before we take action?
I would just like to say thank you for catching that. We had three different people review it, and nobody caught that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Having no public comment and having a motion, then I would ask our clerk if you would please pull the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kaim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. So, under public hearings, our first public hearing is listed as item number nine, Community Development Block Grant 14, the grant closeout. Mr. Weir?
Yes, I'd like to have our finance director, Ms. Sliver, come up and give the presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. What you have before you tonight is to hold a public hearing to close out the 2014 CBDG grant. One of the grant requirements is to have a public hearing after everything has been finalized, to report out on what the accomplishments were, and to accept public input on those accomplishments before we submit the final papers. So I was just going to take everybody, hopefully pretty quickly, through the timeline of the grant, the different projects that were completed, and how much everything cost. Okay. So, the Notice of Funding Availability, or what we call the NOFA, for this grant was released in January of 2014. It was a total of approximately $28.5 million for the non-entitlement jurisdictions in California. Non-entitlement meaning we don't have, we're not big enough to apply directly to the federal program, so we apply through the state. We held a public hearing January 29th in 2014. It was a joint public hearing between the city and the county, held one together, to present the NOFA to the public and get input on what sort of projects and programs should be applied for. This was also when CBDG clarified the requirement that the city cannot apply for programs that benefit primarily county residents. That's when all of that was clarified in their management memo. So from that point forward, all of the programs that the city funds have to be primarily benefiting city residents. February 18th, 2014, there was another public hearing at a city council meeting. That was when the city council at the time directed the staff of which programs to apply for. And in March, there was another public hearing to present the application, to get approval, and then submit it to the state. So what was applied for? There was a public improvement project, that's the B Street Sewer, a public facilities project, that's the Head Start Building, two public services, the food bank and Harrington House, and then the general administration. So the total application was $1,923,300, out of a maximum of $2 million. We got our award letter, our first award letter, in October of 2014, but they had made a, or somebody had made a little miscalculation on one of the projects, so we got an updated letter in March of 2015, and then we were able to get started. Okay, so for the B Street Sewer Project, and I'm not really the expert on this, so if you have detailed questions, Mr. Weir is here. But basically, the project was to replace the sewer main under B Street between Second and the treatment plant. It was a clay pipe that was installed in 1979, and it was too small, as well as being too old. And that's a critical pipe, because that section, 100% of everything that goes into our treatment plant goes through that section of pipe. So the construction bid was awarded to McLennan Excavation. These types of projects, we are required to have a labor compliance consultant do that. That was Adams Ashby. Construction began in February of 2016, finished in October. The final total cost was $1,553,039. Again, that was CBDG of $1,395,349, and the city contributed the rest, $157,000. The beneficiaries of this project are the entire population of the city, because again, 100% of everything goes through that pipe, which includes 4,695 low and moderate income people and households. So this was the diagram of where the project took place. And just as a reminder, we also were able to repave that section of the drive in the park, which was very helpful. So this is not too long after the construction started, just to kind of get an idea of how big of a project this was. Any questions before we move on? Okay. So the Head Start Building, it's owned by the city. The city has leased it to North Coast Children's Services since 1992 for their Head Start program. The building was out of compliance for ADA in a number of areas, the entryway, the fence, the ramp, the bathrooms, the hallway. A lot of things were too narrow, the angles weren't right. This one did go out to bid twice, I believe. Eventually, the bid was awarded to Pearson Company, with city staff taking on some of the smaller projects, like some of the painting. Labor compliance, again, was done by Adams Ashby. Construction started in May of 2017, finished in October, with a final cost of $176,464. The original CBDG grant covered just over $93,000 of that. We also pitched in some of our general admin funds that had been awarded, and we did receive some program income in that year that we also put toward this project. There were currently, at the time the project was finished, there were 18 low-income families with children in the center, and that building will be used for CBDG activities for a minimum of five years. Lost my pictures there. I had a couple pictures of the Head Start program. They must have got lost. Sorry. I had a couple pictures for you. The RHS Food Bank was one of the public service programs. We had an agreement with them to provide $150,000 for food bank operations, personnel costs, and food purchases. Originally, that agreement was going to run through October of 2017, but the contract was terminated by the city effective the end of August 2017. So the final approved costs were $141,383. The beneficiaries were 2,619 low and moderate income people, with a total of 5,787 food boxes distributed. Oh, there's the pictures. Sorry, out of order. This was the entryway to the Head Start Building before and after, and the restroom before and after. Okay. Sorry about that. For Harrington House, we had another subrecipient agreement with RHS, again, for $150,000 for the operation of the domestic violence shelter, personnel costs, mortgage, and client assistance. Again, the agreement was terminated effective August 31st, 2017. Their final eligible costs were $145,183. They served 308 low and moderate income people during that time, and that included over 4,600 victim and survivor counseling sessions, 23,000 shelter nights, 41 restraining orders. They ran an emergency hotline and gave 85 presentations to local youth. The final piece was the general admin that pays for city staff time, public notices, our consultant, things like that. And we spent $97,645 over the approximately two and a half years. So what I would like to ask you to do is to open the public hearing, receive comments. If you have any questions for me or Mr. Weir, we're happy to answer them. And then to approve the closeout documents that are in your packet and direct us to file them with the state.
All right. So we will have the public hearing. It is now open, and we have heard at least the beginning of our staff report with any follow-up that we might have from the council. But we'll go ahead and open up for public comment at this time for this public hearing. Do we have any public comment regarding the closeout of the 2014 Community Development Block Grant? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the councils. Council, have any questions for staff? Seeing no questions, then, do I have a motion that we direct staff to submit the final closeout documents?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I think, I think maybe we also have to approve the accomplishments first. Is that true, Linda? Maybe we can do both at the same-
I'm sorry.
We can do both at the same time.
All right. So, Ms. Follman, would you make a motion that we approve the final accomplishments and direct staff to submit the final closeout documents?
I move we approve the final accomplishments under the Community Development Block Grant contract and direct staff to submit final closeout documents to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kaim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Good work. All right. Next item on our agenda under public hearings is a urgency ordinance. Mr. Weir, want to address this?
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council. This is, the staff's been working on this with our FEMA representatives for some time. This has gone back and forth between city staff and FEMA to get the, to get the ordinance in the, in the condition that they would approve it. Currently, the city is in suspended status for the, for our flood insurance program. So by approving this ordinance, that will allow FEMA then to reinstate us. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Taylor, and he can give you a little history on the ordinance itself and kind of the, where we've been and where we're going.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
I have a presentation for you. I am going to sit over to give it, because there's a lot of small stuff that I have a hard time seeing. And I will come back up here for any questions. But I will go through kind of the history of where we were, where we're at, and then we'll also go through the revisions to the ordinance and a whole lot of other information in there. But as always, if you have any questions as we go through this presentation, don't hesitate to ask, because there is going to be a lot of information in here.
All right.
So you can see that kind of opening shot there. That is actually from the 1964 floods. It is not from the tsunami. So the same year, as I recall, there was major flooding in the area, and that is actually all the result of debris that washed out of the rivers and found its way into the Crescent City harbor. So a little bit of historical context. So the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, really started in the National Flood Insurance Act of 1968, which came about as a result back in 1927. There was major flooding in Mississippi River Valley. What happened at that time, it was such a large flood, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
That it impacted 11 different states, actually. And at the time, a lot of insurance companies just went bankrupt, because there were so many claims that were made. So subsequently, there was some other flooding, like in the early 60s, kind of the federal government- Kind of the federal government's response up to this point, after '27, most of the, it was considered an uninsurable risk, so most of your private insurers just walked away, they weren't insuring floods anymore. So kind of the only really mechanism at the time, you'd have a flood, and the federal government would respond with some kind of relief. Obviously, it wasn't really sustainable. So then National Flood Insurance Act of 1968 came into play. Shortly after that, in 1973, the National Flood Insurance Program, I'm sorry, the Flood Disaster Prevention Act of 1973 made it mandatory that anybody who received any kind of a federal-backed loan had to have flood insurance. And so, of course, now you have really one flood provider, which is the federal government. Later on, you had the Bigger Water's Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012. What happened was, this kind of got rid of federal subsidies for what were known as pre-firm properties, so there are properties that were developed prior to the first firm maps coming out and the National Flood Insurance Program. But once they eliminated those subsidies, the insurance, as you can imagine, went through the roof, it got really expensive for a lot of these folks. So then, 2014, you had the Homeowner Affordability Act, which was kind of the last act, which actually got rid of, kind of reenacted a lot of the subsidies. But at the time, in between 2012 and 14, because the cost of federal insurance was rising so high, you started to see some more of the private companies getting into the insurance market. But then after 2014, since those rates fell, they kind of got back, it's kind of stabilized again. And then you can find the NFIP, which is in Title 44 of the Federal Code of Regulation, Section 60.3, and this is kind of the floodplain management criteria. And so really, the city's role in all of this is to have the floodplain management, and that's the ordinance that we're talking about. It's our job through all of this to manage our floodplain responsibly, and I'll definitely go into that farther, obviously. But what we're talking about, too, these are all minimum standards that are set. Then programs federally backed flood insurance available to participating communities, so how it works, if a community wants to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, the community has to pass these ordinances, and we have to manage the floodplains. So the whole part of managing the floodplain is to regulate development within those floodplains, is to reduce the risk of floods. Some quick facts to show you how broad this is, something about 95% or so of mortgages are federally backed, so you're almost talking just about every mortgage or loan that comes through. Again, obviously, the goal of this is to reduce the costs associated with disaster relief, and according to FEMA's website that I looked at, the last update there, there was about 24 flood insurance policies, and that's just within the city of Crescent City, we're not talking about countywide, only in the city. So it all starts with a flood insurance study, an FIS. What this is, they come in, federal government or FEMA, and they usually contract out for a lot of this. They'll come into an area, and they will do a lot of hazard mapping, they'll look at the local streams, they'll look at the river, in our case, they'll look at the coastline to determine the risks of flooding, and then from that, they generate the firm maps, which are the flood maps. So our last FIS revision was started back in 2011, so we're kind of, our flood insurance studies for Delano County, we are part of that. So sometimes these revisions won't even consider Crescent City. The last one in 2010 just looked at some areas along the Smith River and some local creeks. But then 2011, they started more of a comprehensive study of the coastline. This was known as the Open Pacific Coast Study, or the California Coastal Analysis Mapping Project. And really, what they did is, they went back, and it was also working with NOAA, they looked at a lot of historic tidal information, wave run-up, then it was really the, more of a comprehensive mapping program, where they looked at the bathymetric data, which is kind of the water depths, but they, you get that by measuring the sea level, the floor of the sea, so that's how you can generate the depths of the ocean. And then, of course, historic storm events, they also looked at that. One of the big things of this update was tsunamis were not considered, and that has been a huge point of contention for the city for a long time, because the former firm maps were based on the 1964 event. I've looked at documents from the early 80s, back and forth to the city and FEMA staff protesting about the mapping, and I'll get into that a little later, about how that has impacted us over the years. So obviously, the latest study resulted in a 2017 physical map revision, so again, they updated our firm maps. What they can do with these revisions, they'll come in, they may add some new areas, or they may take some areas out of the flood zone. So when we get to the flood insurance rate maps, you'll probably hear them more commonly called as firms. FEMA, again, uses these maps as a means of identifying the SFHAs, which are special flood hazard areas. Obviously, these are the areas that have been identified as having, being most prone to flood damage. As far as I could tell, some of the first maps came out in 1983, then, of course, there were some revisions, the last coastal revisions were in '86 and 2017. As you'll see on the map, each community is assigned a specific identifier, that is our number for the city of Crescent City. And the maps, again, are a scale of one inch equals 500 feet, so sometimes it can be difficult to really identify the actual boundary, so sometimes we'll have to get a land surveyor or a civil engineer to actually go out and map in the flood boundary areas. And map identifies flood hazards indicated by type of flood zone. So here, really, the applicable flood zones for us, really, the four that we're looking at mostly are the A, the AE, the V, and the VE zones, the V being the high-velocity kind of flood zones along the coast. When you see the V, those are unmapped, not, are unmapped where they don't have a base flood elevation, with the VE and the AEs, those have a set flood base elevation. So it runs in some difficulty for us, as far as managing the floodplain, is in the A zones, if we do get development, is up to the local jurisdiction to determine what the base flood elevation is, and then we'd have to go back and look at some literature that FEMA has put out and some different studies, and we'll use those to try to make a determination. So this kind of gives you an idea how those different zones and the mapping works. So you look here, kind of along the immediate coastline would be your V zone, where it's really not mapped with the base flood elevation, so you have just wave action, you start moving up, you get your AE or your VE, where they've identified the flood risk, right, the base flood is 17 feet, so anything above that's going to flood. Then you'd move in a little further inland, you can get kind of your AH zones, where you might get one to three feet of standing water. You could get like in an AO zone, where you might have some hilly and some flat areas, so you could get some more water running, then you'd get further beyond that into your 500-year event, and then beyond that, you could get kind of your unshaded zones, where really the hazard's not as high. Just give you a bit of an idea how it works. So a lot of times, you'll hear this 100 and 500-year event, that's typically what the maps are based off of, the 100-year event is kind of a happy medium they came up with. These are really just statistical probabilities. So the 100-year flood, or the 1% annual chance flood, and really, the proper terminology is annual exceedance probability. Again, translation, it is a 1 in 100 chance that a flood will be equal or exceeded in any one-year period, and has an average recurrence of about 100 years, and you can see it kind of lies out. A good example here is, if you had 1,000 years of stream flow data, we would expect probably 10 flood events within that 1,000 years, right, one every 100 years. The problem is, they don't happen every year, right? You could have two events in one year, or one event every five years, again, it's just a probability, and it's kind of the best guess scenario that we have, if I guess in other terms. And then the other one you'll see is the 500-year event, and then obviously, it just kind of doubles, or your 1 in 500-year chance, or the 2%. Percentages then are determined, obviously, by tracking peak stream flows or historic wave data, again, it's just basically using statistical analysis. And one factor, the last fact here, the 1% the AEP, over a 30-year mortgage, has about a 26% chance of being flooded at least once in that 30 years. And again, it's based on a statistical analysis, actually have the formula here, if anybody's kind of a math geek and you want to look at it later on. Get some of these pictures down below, that one on the right-hand side here was taken in Klamath after '64 event, you can see the amount of sedimentation in the building, which is pretty astounding, and then, of course, again, along the coast. So then, base flood elevation, or the BFE. So this is really kind of where it's mapped, where the base flood will be kind of the standard, average flood that they predict for that 100-year event. Again, BFE is a regulatory requirement for the elevation or floodproofing of structures, so that's how they determine, really, your different insurance rates as well, and how a structure should be managed within the floodplain, you know, should it be, you know, at the very minimum, the bottom of the structure has to be at least at that base flood elevation, and typically, it has to be elevated about one foot above that, and I'll get into that a little further. And then how we track that, we require elevation certificates, those are also used for the NFIP ratings. Another part of the elevation certificate, if somebody brings some fill-in, if they can do it without redirecting flows, they can request a LOMA, which is a letter of map amendment, which means that FEMA will actually look at that property and consider possibly taking it out of the flood area, or the special flood hazard area. And the other thing, obviously, we're looking at here is mean sea level, or the MSL, that's the average level of the ocean's surface, and this, again, based on historical data from tidal gauges, it's also based on the NAVD-88, which typically, now, all of the FEMA maps from now on are all going to use that NAVD-88, and really, it's just a base datum, it's a reference point for taking all of your measurements for your base flood elevations. There's points across Canada, the United States, all the way down to Mexico. I think one of our markers is out on the seawall along Front Street, we have a permanent marker there. So really, it's just your datum point, is where all your elevations are taken from that base point. But you can see in the graphic on the left-hand side here, you can see the old, they used to use this NGVD-29, then you can see the difference, so the NAVD-88 is the newest datum. It took in more consideration of the curvature of the earth based on the levels of the ocean, so they change from point to point based on that. So you can see, though, there would be a discrepancy if you use the old datum, as for measuring the same spot, you'd come up with a 10-foot elevation compared to NAVD-88, where you'd get roughly about eight and a half feet. So I think that's why they're really switching over now and going to just one datum point. Again, base flood elevation, this kind of shows you how it can impact the insurance rates. Here you can see a property that was probably pre-firm, or was developed below the base flood elevation, it could cost you maybe 2,9500 a year, for example. If you have a property that was developed at the base flood level, it'd be dropped down to about 1,400 a year, and if you're above that base flood elevation, you know, obviously drops down significantly. So again, it's right, it's just a risk analysis, and you can get your rates based on that. And then the bottom graphic just kind of shows you, whoops, sorry, development above that base flood elevation, so you could have your base flood 100-year event here, but you could also have a higher level if you're on the coast for wave topping or storm surge. But it just kind of shows you how, the lowest, you know, the bottom of the structure, the lowest structural member would be at the bottom of the floor. As you can see in that graphic as well, it's built up on stilts, so obviously, you see that a lot, kind of in the Gulf Coast now, where it allows water to flow freely underneath the structure. You get different problems with buoyancy, even if you have, say, a flooding and you have a basement, right, so when that water starts rising up, it'll lift those, if they're not anchored properly, it'll lift those structures off their foundation. Substantial improvements and damage, this is where a lot of this comes in for the city, for our floodplain management, and basically, substantial improvement has really triggered anything that exceeds 50% of the market value of a structure. Again, FEMA has left it up to the local jurisdiction to determine what that is, that could be based on, you know, many different methods of coming up of evaluation appraisal, obviously being probably one of the better options. Substantial damage, again, it would be the same as that 50%, so if a structure's damaged more than 50% of the value, the structure would have to be rebuilt back to the current standards. You can't just take it back to the pre-standard condition of the property. The 50% threshold was chosen, they felt that this was pretty much a compromise between two discrete streams, either you just let people do what they want in the flood hazard area, and you don't have any regulation, or if you limited it so much that you just would never get any investment, or anybody fixing their properties or doing any other kind of work. And then another challenge for the city, a lot of times, is to figure out what the value of the project is. So a lot of times, we'd use valuation tables that are put out, like by the International Code Council, for building costs, or just get an itemized list from a contractor, it's kind of standard practice that we do for building permits now. So this kind of gives you an idea of what the substantial improvements mean. Here's an example, on your left, of a lateral addition. So in this scenario here, you can see that they just built the whole thing up to the base flood elevation, here you can see this would be the existing structure that was below, but any additions that they make would have to be elevated. So you can see here, they made addition onto their house, it's actually elevated above the base flood elevation. Obviously, you can imagine, this causes potential issues for folks that are, already have established businesses or residential structures within these special flood hazard areas. Here's remodeling pre-firm structures, you know, could be down below the base flood elevation, but then in this, another scenario here, they brought, had to bring the whole house up, as you can see down here, this other graphic, they've basically taken this house and just lifted completely up off its foundation, and then, of course, build a new foundation underneath that, set it back down, it'll be elevated to the proper level. And then you have, recall, kind of wet and dry floodproofing, in this scenario, you could possibly have some dry floodproofing, you don't see this much anymore, where they'd actually, if you had some exterior walls that were below that base flood elevation, there's some methods where you could make them impenetrable for water, different types of membranes and things like that, to seal up the structure. Preferred method now, though, and really, if you're doing any kind of, if there's substantial damage or remodeling or additions, you can't do the dry anymore, it has to be brought up. Any questions so far? So the firm maps, this is kind of what you'll see on the front of the panel. Again, over here, you'll see our unique identifier for the city. Here you'll see a panel locator, and the reason why there's different panels, because you could have one flood area that has a large flood zone, so then, therefore, they have to make maps within that mapped area, so you'll have just a series of different little panels. Notes to users, this kind of gives you, directs you to get some different information, and kind of your flood hazard information, these are just different icons that would be on the map itself. So, these were, this was the previous flood zone map for the city, I just took this excerpt, it was kind of a larger area. As you can see here, I outlined it in orange, it was a little difficult to see, but they previously had it zoned as a VE, which would be a high-velocity run-up zone, but as you can see, this is Fifth Street, so the whole area within Fifth Street, all the way down and all the way 101 South, they had it mapped, basically based on the '64 tsunami, as being a high-velocity run-up zone. So as you imagine, that's kind of the highest level that you have for flood hazard, at least we do here for our coastal zone. And then even beyond that, you can see, they had this marked as a Zone X, which it's still, it's not a special area, but it's still considered a flood zone. So you see it really encompassed a large chunk of the city. So here's our current maps, which is nice, and so, again, we, the city's gone back and forth for many, many, many years. We finally, it was nice with the new mapping study that they did, that they actually based it on the real 100-year event scenario, which would be that wave run-up zone. And so, as you can see... And so, as you can see, this whole area here that was in is all out now. All this area back here is Fifth Street and over and beyond. So really, now it's all basically reduced back to a Zone A. And Zone B, this would be the Shoreline RV Park down here. The Zone B is really been more correctly mapped as that coastal flood run-up boundary. Again, here's one of the other maps. This kind of shows you out here, this is outside the county, though. This is kind of the Elk Creek area, drainage area and down through the estuary. This would be the south end of town here. Again, this would be over by Battery Point and Treatment Plant. As you can see, we have a little bit higher elevation over there, but everything, you know, down on the beaches and along the bluffs is all considered a VE zone or a run-up zone. So that was good news for us, good news for the citizens. There's also state responsibility here. So the state, just like cities, they have to comply with the federal requirements. So the state also comes up with what's known as a model ordinances. So our revision was based on their model floodplain ordinance for coastal communities. Actually have three different ones. Obviously, we fell into the coastal. So I'll go into some of the ordinance revisions. As you see, the ordinance is all included in your packets. It's fairly lengthy. There were a lot of revisions to it. A lot of it in the definitions, again, as I discussed earlier, for the mean sea level now includes the NAV D, the North American Vertical Datum, 88. So again, that's really going to become the standard over the next few years to come. They added a definition for primary frontal dune, which we didn't have before. Added some more definition for public safety and nuisance. It's really pertaining back to variances, basically saying that we can't issue a variance for development within a special flood hazard area. If we do, it can't create any kind of a safety or a nuisance. Kind of refined definition for start of construction. Now, it's included the date that the building permit was issued, if it's within 180 days of placement of any part of a permanent construction. So site work, like clearing a site or excavating for footings, isn't considered permanent construction, but as soon as you pour slab or put that first structural member in, that is the start of construction. And then, of course, another new definition for substantial damage, which, again, as we already discussed, was the cost equals or exceeds that 50% to the market value. Permit review requires the city to maintain a record now of all variance actions and we're supposed to report these, I think, biannally to FEMA. Any flood control projects as well have to be reported to FEMA. And then, of course, any LOMAs or letter of map revisions or modifications. Provisions for flood hazard reduction, residential projects within an unnumbered A-zone without BFEs must have BFE determined, again, by use of FEMA publication. So that falls back on the local jurisdiction. That is going to be our responsibility to come up with that. Base floors for residential structures, V-zones, must be elevated to or above the base flood elevation. That's kind of been standard. They revised the language a little bit. There was some, a lot of new language for manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. Newer rebuilt manufactured homes in A or V zones must be elevated on and anchored to permanent foundations that are above the BFE. I see a picture down there of one of our businesses south of town, and the reason why that's in there, it's hard to tell, but this property is actually elevated up on stilts. Not just a fence there underneath. That's kind of what you'd be looking at for development.
Sorry, why was that required for that business and not for other businesses in that same area?
You know, and I didn't have a chance to go back and look to see exactly what year that was developed, but it could have been one of the newer structure down there that, obviously, that whole south end of town there is within a special flood hazard area and then it would have been required. I mean, it's been required in there for a while that it has to be elevated up to that The newer rebuilt manufactured homes, AV, I think I went over that already. This is kind of the reason why they need to be anchored. This is the reason why recreational vehicle parks, as you know, for our park, we require that every vehicle that comes in has to be licensed and has to be street-ready. If it's a trailer, we don't allow you to tow it in with a tow truck or other means and just drop it off. You have to have onsite vehicle to be able to tow it out there at a moment's notice. So the new definition of recreational vehicles on the AMV zones, it either has to be on-site for fewer than 180 consecutive days or be fully licensed and ready for highway use, obviously. Has to be connected with quick utility disconnects, which is what we have, and obviously, no permanent structures. Some of you weren't present here back in 2006 when we took the park over, but there were a lot of these little kind of shacks and porches and other things that were kind of attached to a lot of these recreational vehicles at the time, which obviously we don't allow anymore. And variances. So a variance, obviously, is to bring about some relief down there for somebody who cannot comply with the flood standards. But they've kind of made that a lot stricter now in the new verbiage. It has to be only issued, well, here, only be issued if a property characteristics are so unusual that complying with the regulations would create exceptional hardship. Economic considerations are not allowed. So if it's too cost prohibitive or we want to get some development, you can't use this as a mechanism to try to get that development. Property must be a half acre or less and surrounded by substantial development. Again, must be the minimum necessary to provide any kind of relief down there from the standards. The city must provide written notice, this is new verbiage, to anyone who receives variance for development below the BFE, that their premium rates will increase up to $25 for every $100 of coverage. I can imagine if you have $100,000 in coverage, you can add up. And then, they recommend, it hasn't, it's not a requirement right now, though, that the variance be recorded against the property as well. And as you can see in the other photograph down here, that would be a manufactured home park. We have one within the city limits. But again, as you can imagine, if you get a flood, you don't want it lifting up and floating away on you. But anything that doesn't meet that base flood elevation within that park, if they do, again, have the damage or they do any kind of renovation work that would exceed that 50%, it would all have to be brought up. And the last thing, you have the community rating system or the CRS. Really, this is kind of a FEMA system that if we do go above and beyond, as explained, those are the minimum standards. Our ordinance is adopting the minimum standards for flood reductions and hazard reductions. Some of these things we do already for the elevation certificates, map information, hazard disclosures, they can give you, for so many things that we are doing, they'll give us so many points. And those points could add up to some reductions in premium costs for the community. So we will reach out to FEMA and talk about that as well. One other important thing that I forgot to mention in the revision, it was requested that we change the former floodplain administrator, change it to the Director of Community Development. So that's what we're proposing in the new ordinance. I guess anybody's going to ask, I'll tell you. That is a picture of Captain Courageous. He was washed down the Klamath River in the 64 event. From what I read, something about he washed out about maybe two miles out to sea and actually was able to fight and stay atop of some debris and found his way back into the Crescent City Harbor where some fishermen had spotted him and they were able to get out there and rescue him and get him out of the water. As you can imagine and from what I've heard of a lot of accounts, that there were hundreds, if not thousands, of different animals, cattle, even deer, bear that washed up as a result of the flood. So created a huge mess on the beaches. There were actually burning carcasses, from what I've heard, for weeks at a time. Oh, just a neat little sight. Apparently, he became quite famous at the time and made a lot of the rounds at the local fairs and different places. Is there any questions about the ordinance, about how the program works? Our responsibility is the city to manage the floodplain.
So does this map address tsunamis at all?
No. So we have a nice little window of opportunity here for folks because I guarantee you that's coming. Right now, there are maps that are out, but they are for informational purposes only. They're not regulated, but I would guarantee you that in the coming years, those will, that will be standard and they'll be coming out.
So the benefits that we're reaping right now with this change, this revision, are not necessarily going to last very long?
Well, I don't know that. I can't say that for sure. You know, again, they're basing it on the 100-year event. Now, if they come out and they find that it's a 500-year event, then yes, some of those could fall back into that 500-year mapping as a result of some of the tsunami maps that would come out. I think it's hard to make that argument that it's a 100-year event because, you know, they are pretty infrequent and far between.
So if you were considering getting flood insurance, now's the time to do it.
Well, not necessarily. I think now's the time. A lot of the folks, like I said, will fall out of the requirement. So, you know, it's based on the requirement from FEMA, if you have a federally-backed mortgage, is that you have to have flood insurance if you're in one of these special flood hazard areas. But as you can see from the mapping, a lot of folks have dropped out of that now. So some folks might not have to have the flood insurance if they chose not to.
If you own your home, basically.
I'm sorry, what's that?
If you own your home, basically.
If you have a mortgage, correct, yes. Obviously, if you own it free and clear, you're not required to have flood insurance.
So Eric, what would have been the consequences for the city if we hadn't chosen to update our ordinance?
Well, again, you wouldn't be, we wouldn't be eligible to participate in the flood insurance program. So the federal government basically say, we're not going to insure. And any insurance policies that would come due wouldn't be renewed. So you, those folks would be forced to look at private insurance. So theoretically, that'd be more expensive. And again, it could impact if we had some grant-funded, federally grant-funded projects, it could potentially impact those as well.
Yeah, I just, a little question of why the, I mean, we've kind of touched on it a little bit, I think, with urgency ordinance part of this. Just some of the verbiage in here that, oh, let me get to the ordinance.
On page... In the resolution, is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, one part of it says that, "Fehler of past ordinance would pose an imminent peril to the safety and welfare of citizens." It almost, almost feels like, you know, the council's kind of being pushed to go a certain direction because the safety of, and the welfare of its citizens is in peril. And I don't know, I guess I'm just not seeing it. I mean, I realize we have some insurance policies that are, I guess, on hold.
So the other part of that, and I guess back to Mr. Paulman's question as well, one of the other risks that we would have is if we did have a flood event, that FEMA could refuse to come in here and provide any disaster relief. So I think we felt that going into the time of the year with the winter storms coming and really kind of unpredictably, you don't know if we could have an event since they, when they do these map revisions, they also come in and look at our floodplain ordinance. So they did a review of the ordinance. They found that it was out of compliance. So currently, we are out of compliance. So really, we had to re-adopt this to come back into compliance.
Okay. That makes sense in the, in the way that we would need some help if catastrophic event happened. I understand that.
Again, there's statistical probabilities and you don't want to be caught on the short end of that, if that did actually happen.
For sure. Page was it, nice short joke. Hey, easy now. You said the person put in charge of, or as for being the floodplain administrator, basically is you when it was recommended that it was Director of Public Works. Did I get that backwards? I thought that's what you said, but it doesn't say that here in the...
The ordinance should be revised to reflect Director of Community Development now. It currently, previously, I guess currently, was the Director of Public Works. So we're asking to make that change to the Director of Community Development.
I guess what we were looking at is in the, in the draft report under, under section...
Yeah, it kind of came out a little later. So it's in the final ordinance. It should reflect that it's the Director of Community Development.
Okay, so under definitions, under 153220, the underlying part where it says public works, that's, that will be corrected?
Correct. It will be to Director of Community Development.
So is that line, number 19, is that an addition that we have made or is that an addition that FEMA has? They, has FEMA dictated?
It's up to the local, it's up to the local jurisdiction to make that decision. And so, as you see in the ordinance, anything that was strikeout was deleted information. Anything that is underlined has been added.
So under that draft, that's going to say Director of Community Development?
Correct.
What we're reading now is floodplain administrator is the community official designated by title to administer and enforce floodplain management regulations. That official being the Director of Public Works.
Yeah, so that would be amended.
So we're going to need to fix, okay.
The idea being that code enforcement is going to handle this portion of it, right?
Yes, so we had some restructuring over the years. I mean, I've seen a lot of different jurisdictions. A lot of them have public works. So what I'm having in community development, it really depends on how you're structured. So in the past, the building department was under public works department, but it has since been moved to community development. So one end, a lot of the, like, for the flood certificates and the development, obviously, a lot of that's just tied back to building and development. You know, some of our public works or flood projects, obviously, in some mapping would be, fall back under public works. But we're a small organization, so we're, you know, we'll deal with what we need to deal with as we go along. But for kind of the daily administrative responsibilities would go back to the community development department.
Another question I have in the draft, under the definitions, number 36, it's on page five of the draft ordinance. It's new construction. It means for floodplain management purposes, structures for which the start of construction commenced on or after the effective date of September 22nd, 1986. And here's where there's an underlying part. And includes any subsequent improvements to such structures. So my question is if we have a building that falls into that date range that's started construction after September 26th, somebody's, or a simple replacement of a window or some kind of improvement to their structure, they're going to have to bring their...
Has to trigger that 50%, but if it does, and it could, I mean, that's one of the things.
It says any subsequent improvements.
Right, if they trigger that 50... Well, if they trigger that 50%, that's the start of construction, but you look at the substantial improvement definition, and that's where the requirement is, has to meet that 50% threshold.
That was my, kind of my question. It doesn't say any substantial improvement that would fall under that other definition. That's why I was kind of curious about that particular part of that.
There should be definition in here.
Okay. Anything else?
Hold on, let me, yeah, let me get to that real quick.
I can give out a few more, yes.
Yeah, so on 51 in the ordinance, you'll see substantial improvement, that definition.
Yes, I understand the definition for substantial improvement, just under that item 36 under definitions, the new construction. It just said any subsequent improvement. So it kind of confused me, I thought it...
Yeah, I think they mean for, in the terms of the ordinance for the floodplain administrative part of it, that anything after that date, because that's the effective date of the flood insurance study. So anything subsequent to that while we're under that. So you'd have the pre-firm, as I kind of briefly touched on. So those would be, would be development and things that happened prior to these maps or this flood insurance study coming out.
On page nine of the, of the draft, I know you're trying to keep up with me, under that section number one, permit review, under the little D. Just wondering if you could explain that paragraph. I was wondering if you could explain that paragraph. And for those listening in, it says, "The proposed development does not adversely affect the carrying capacity," I don't know what that means, "of areas where base flood elevations have been determined, but a floodway has not been designated." This means that the cumulative effect of the proposed development, when combined with all other existing and anticipated development, will not increase the water surface elevation of the base flood more than one foot at any point within the Crescent City.
Yeah, so I didn't want to provide, put too much information. So what that means, you, there are instances where you can develop within a flood zone or a floodway. So a floodway be like a stream channel. So the waters are already going through, but if you get up, so what this, what did describe this? You'd have kind of the year-round blue stream that flows. And as you get up higher, you kind of get into the floodplain. So you can allow some development up in that floodplain as long as you're raised above that base flood elevation. But that development can't impede or restrict the flow of that stream channel or theoretically floodwaters that would come through. So basically, you know, any development would have to be raised to that base flood elevation. Again, you'd be up on kind of that pier system where water could just freely flow underneath the development. You can't build just a regular structure that when water hits it, it diverts the water or slows the water flow down, which could potentially then cause flood damage on, on adjacent property, for example.
Couldn't build something on top of where the Elk Creek flowway goes through between the harbor and the fairgrounds, where it's not always flowing, but, I mean, if development couldn't be built there where it would stop that water from flowing?
Correct, I mean, that's really what, that's the, yeah, what it's meant for. It's not to divert or impede or change the flow of the water for any potential development. So there are instances where you can develop, what they're saying, within a base flood, I mean, within a special flood hazard area. But again, it can't cause adverse impacts to that flood zone. And again, a lot of this just falls back to the local jurisdiction to make those determinations of these instances.
One last, very small thing. I kind of reviewing this, I was kind of trying to think from the contractor perspective. And I was just curious, when we talk about anchoring, on page 14, it talks about all manufacturers' homes to be placed or substantially improved on sites in an existing park, which we only have one. The City of Crescent, I'm sorry. "Will be securely fastened to an adequately anchored foundation system to resist flotation, collapse, and lateral movement." What kind of anchoring system are they talking about?
So typically, you'll see that new construction now, a lot of that came out even with the earthquake standards. So older construction, it wasn't permanently affixed to a foundation, say. So you say you'd have your block foundation, and then you'd put your, you know, your wood structure on top of that. So a lot of times, they'll have anchor bolts that come up through the foundation, and then you bolt that down to the foundation.
It's just simply that, it's nothing, no other exorbitant kind of.
Yeah, I mean, there could be obviously different engineered types, but basically, that's what it is. You're, you're anchoring that to that permanent foundation. That foundation, you know, down two, three feet or whatever the requirement would be to resist the buoyancy.
All right, I understand. You get where I was coming from? I was wondering if it was going to exorbitantly add to construction costs or.
Well, I mean, it's a way, we, we've been. Yeah, we've been dealing with this for a while now, though. It does. And there's no getting around that. It's going to add. If you want to develop in a special flood hazard area, it's going to cost some additional construction fees. But that was kind of the, the fight over the years for us to try to reduce that flood hazard area, which for us has been a huge improvement to get a big portion of the city out of that. I mean, I'll give you an example. I remember, I believe it was 2010, 2011, we met with some ALIMA representatives and discussing Taco Bell. And they wanted Taco Bell to purchase these large stand-up walls. So if there, in event of there being a flood, and I don't know how they were going to go out and even get them up. They would have to get these structures, put them up, cover the windows, and, and keep the water from flowing into the building. It was just, it was absurd. It didn't make any sense. That's some of the stuff that we've dealt with over the years, and it's nice to see a lot of that be eliminated.
There's another part of this review was not having the, the firm, the maps, the newest maps. But what little you could see on the, the internet, it doesn't seem like there is a lot of areas that are the floodplain.
Special flood hazard areas.
Special flood hazard areas that, that people would be interested in building on. I mean, this whole, whole thing may be kind of a.
The largest impact is going to be really 101 South, kind of that east side. That's going to be a lot, if you see any kind of new development or additions or significant remodeling, they would have to be brought up. That's would be the most significant area right now. And the rest of it, obviously, has been, a lot of it's just been reduced back to the, the immediate coastline. But because of Elk Creek and where it comes through there, that some of that's been designated as a special flood hazard area.
Any other questions, Mr. Taylor? All right.
I would like to thank Mary Dormand for standing by. She's, she didn't have to, but she was asked to come stand by and ask any, or answer any insurance questions. I just wanted to recognize her.
We're going to go ahead and, and open up public comment then, and if we have public comment regarding this, and we'll bring it back to the council after, so if we have any.
Hi, I'm Mary Dormand. I'm a resident of the county, and I just want to say thank you for jumping on this. I have clients that have been affected by the suspension of the National Flood Insurance Program. I've got one right now who's without coverage and one who's about to lose coverage, and a business owner that's going to lose coverage in the next few months. And that can affect their ability to keep their loans and things like that. So thank you for jumping on this. It really needs to get done.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll, other public comment, we'll bring it back. Anything else, Mr. Taylor? You good?
No, good, there's no other questions.
All right, then, then we will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the council for this urgency ordinance. And I guess I would just want to make sure that, 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 do we need to give any explanation about urgency? Councilman, would that be something that would be advisable for why we're doing this in a single meeting?
I honestly think that the conversation between Councilman Short and Mr. Taylor touched on why this is an urgency ordinance. So I think, I think we're good there.
All right, very good. So we have a proposed urgency ordinance, number 802, and an urgency ordinance of the City Council, the City of Crescent City, amending chapter 15.32 flood damage protection of Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Crescent City Municipal Code. And I'm looking for action from the council.
I move we adopt ordinance number 802-U.
All right, I have a motion to adopt.
I would second that motion.
You have a second? Mr. Weir?
Yes, I believe the motion needs to be to adopt the urgency ordinance 806-.
Yeah, the ordinance, it is 806. It's in our packet. It's printed as 802- Zoo. U, so.
My apologies, I will amend that.
And the, and the public hearing notice was also listed as 802. So.
Seems like something we should figure out before we vote.
I, I think, I think it would be good for us to know which number is the appropriate number.
Like to redact my, my correction there, my apologies.
It does say urgency ordinance 806- Zoo, -U, Zoo, under the attachment notice on the, as far as with the staff report, so that's probably where.
So I'm going to keep my motion the way it is.
Yes, exactly. It was agendaized as 802. The ordinance is 802. It should remain 802.
And, and I think we do need to make sure that we take note of the, the updated language that Mr. Taylor pointed out to us, who the floodplain administrator will be, since what's in our text says the Director of Public Works, that that will be the Director of Community Development. Since that's not in print, I think it should probably be part of our motion since. Is it in the, is it in the, it wasn't in the draft, is it in the final? Okay, if it's in the final, then.
It's in the final.
Then we're fine, okay.
Uh, the one, one other thing, Mayor, if I could. By adopting this as an urgency ordinance, just so the members of the, the public know, that means this ordinance goes into effect immediately. So then after this meeting, we can then submit the documents to FEMA and hopefully get reinstated as soon as possible. By an urgency ordinance, too, it has to pass by a four-fifth vote.
All right, very good. And it is, and it is in the final regarding the Director of Community Development. Thank you. Okay, so I have a, a motion by Councilmember Short and a second by Pro Tem Keim. Any, any final comments, council? All right, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Reno.
Yes.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Keim.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Okay, good discussion and good that we've got this moving. The last item on our, we don't have anything for the Housing Authority, nothing for the Successor Agency, and no community business. We have two other things under new business. One is an agreement between the city and Caltrans. Mr. Weir, you want to talk to us about this?
So what's before you tonight is actually something that Caltrans staff approached us about several months ago. And we've been trying to, to work through the details to figure out exactly how we're going to get this in place. And what it is, is it is for the telemetry or communications systems to be in place so that we can have a, a camera, basically a, a traffic cam or a webcam that will always be looking at Last Chance Grade. So that way, the members of the public can log into a Caltrans website. They can see the condition of the slide area, which is, as we all know, is all too important to, to the function of 101 and definitely a concern to us all. Here tonight, we have Jamie Matatiola. He is the project manager, I believe, for the Last Chance Grade project. So he can answer any questions that you might have. But basically, the, the project is to, to install this telemetry equipment on the existing pole that houses the tsunami siren at the treatment plant. The city also has some telemetry equipment on this, on this pole. But really, it's in an ideal location to receive that signal from Last Chance Grade. So you can see this on the, on the aerial photo here. Last Chance Grade shooting right into town, which is that line of sight that they need for this type of communication. And then from the treatment plant, it'll then shoot to an area just off of Elk Valley Road where Caltrans has their, their equipment that then can receive that signal, process it, so that we can have the live webcam up. The equipment that will be needed to be housed is basically just a cabinet which will house the equipment. This will be placed on the pole outside, and then just some, some patches basically, or some antennas that will be able to receive that signal. The agreement itself outlines the basics, which all costs will be, will be incurred by Caltrans. They will hire the licensed contractors to install the equipment. They guarantee that the signal will not interfere with either the signal from the tsunami siren or the city's telemetry equipment, and that they'll cover any anticipated power costs. The city's IT administrator looked at costs in the past on equipment like this. So it's estimated to be very minimal, to the tune of about $100 a year. So Caltrans will be reimbursing the city for that, as they will be tying into our electric power there. So it will be unmeted from their side. In general, that is, that is the agreement. Like I say, Jamie is here, is here with us. So if the council has questions for, for Jamie in regard to this or Last Chance Grade in general, he is here.
Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I got one. Where will we be able to see the feed? I mean, website, app, on the App Store, or how do we see the feed?
Yeah, so I'd like to direct that to Jamie. He can tell you all about that side of the project.
Yeah, so we're going to have the webcam up on two places. One is our lastchancegrade.com website, and also on the district website. So it should be really easy to find. If anybody Google searches Last Chance Grade, my site comes up.
Do you know if the feed will have mobile capabilities?
I don't know that.
Because I'm driving by it, and I want to know that it's not falling.
Not following you. Yeah.
You're paying attention to the road, Councilmember Follman.
Why are you looking? Great, um, great question. One thing I want to speak to is the locations of the cameras. So folks know where wall three is? This is the wall where we, we've experienced the most historic movement at Last Chance Grade. We've had about 40 feet of horizontal movement since 1937, and about 30 feet of vertical movement. So it's dropped 30 feet, moved over to, towards the coast, 40 feet. We put a camera right there at that wall. And also, we're going to be putting cameras on the north end of the grade and on the south end of the grade, so folks can see, hey, traffic is flowing through, get a sense of the conditions and the traffic flow on, out there. And while I'm here, I just want to say, express my sincere gratitude to the council, to the city, Eric, city manager, I mentioned the IT folks, city attorney. Everyone has been very helpful in, in getting this agreement put together, and we greatly appreciate it so that we can provide this service to the public.
Thanks. I just wish we could have got it done a lot sooner. But that's always me. I know when, when Sebastian first approached me about the idea, and I really think, I think it's been almost a year since we first started throwing around the idea of doing it. But, but I'm glad that we're doing it. And I think that it's, it's a great service to the community, and I certainly applaud Caltrans for thinking outside the box to try to come up with a way that we can give that kind of real-time info to our, to our constituents. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, very good. Thanks, Jamie. All right. So do we have any public comment regarding this action? Okay, seeing no public comment, close public comment and bring it back to the council and.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the interim city manager to sign the license agreement with Caltrans for the purpose of permitting the placement of a radio antenna and related equipment in the city's wastewater treatment plant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have multiple seconds. Pick your choice. Adam Burke, all right, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Councilmember Reno.
Yes.
Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Keim.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Very good. We have one item left on our agenda, and it has to do with an upcoming trip to Rikuzentakata, Japan. Mr. Weir, you want to address the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So there are two actions that are before the council in regard to this item. And the, the first has to do with authorizing two members of the council. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem is what's in the recommendation to represent the city in the upcoming trip to Japan on February 10th through February 17th. As I was going, going through the information in regard to the, the trip with the mayor and finding out some of the, some of the details on what was being paid for and what wasn't, it came to my attention that, that Japan is, is very graciously agreed to pay for the vast majority of the cost of this trip, to have this delegation go over and to continue that, that partnership that we have created over, really over the past several years. You know, when it started with the, the earthquake, which obviously was a nearshore event for them, and then created the distant event for us, destroying our harbor and completely devastating their town, to the boat washing up, which really submitted, submitted that relationship between the two schools to the, to the delegations, where we have gone over and then they have come over here. Now we have this trip going back. So they have graciously offered to pay for the travel expenses, including flight, to go from, I believe it's Medford, I believe it's the closest airport, to Tokyo, and then the, the travel from Tokyo to, to the city that I still have a very hard time pronouncing. And so I will just leave it at that. But what, what's not being covered is some of the other out-of-pocket costs. On a trip like this, that if it's truly representing the city, which I believe this is, that we are, they're representing the city, going over there, looking out of town that has been destroyed by a natural disaster, which we could have here at any moment, and looking at how they're recovering. recovering, really is city business, these are eligible travel expenses if the council choose to authorize it. So this is, what they're not paying for is the hotel in Medford, Oregon, which is required to get the flight, to actually fly to Tokyo, and then also the lodging in Tokyo. So those are some of the expenses that would be covered by the $400, which is in action out of number two. So what's before the council is to approve Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, to be the delegates to go on the Japan trip, and then also authorize up to $400, if requested, out of the current city council travel budget, which has already been approved.
All right. Have any questions from the council?
I mean, I feel like, you know, the obligatory question, are you guys able to go, and do you wanna go? Yes or no?
Well, we're going.
Good.
I guess the only question would be whether or not we go and represent the city, or we go and represent the community as simply as individuals. Because Heidi and I have committed to go, but I truly felt that we needed to be going, it was my desire to go on behalf of the city, since that's the role that Rikuzentakata has specifically asked me to come as. So yes, we are definitely both committed to go.
Good.
Okay, is there anything we all have another chance? All right.
I was just curious, what are you guys planning on doing? If that's, if you guys have an idea.
We do not have a final itinerary yet, but I will say that one of the goals, and one of the reasons that the city of Rikuzentakata has specifically asked for more business people to come, is to introduce both public as well as private people to the community at large. Up to this point in time, a lot of our communications have been governmental agency to governmental agency. While we did meet some local business owners, but part of this trip is really building a broader base of support within their community, with our community leaders and business owners, and then, and I don't, I guess I'm not speaking out of turn here, they're looking at coming back with a very large contingency. I know that Amea Miller shared with me that Mayor Toba's goal is to find, bring as many as 30 with a delegation this year to Delano County, so that they could experience being here. So a lot of this is about building relationships beyond just the governmental relationships.
That makes sense.
It's a personal pledge also, to solidify this relationship that we have with Rikuzentakata. It's important from our school perspective, our city perspective, our business perspective, and this is, this is a trip to solidify that commitment to them.
Thank you.
All right, if you can bring it back here. Swip, public comment?
As somebody who has traveled to Japan more than once, I'd like to make a suggestion. I believe that the amount of $400 ought to be raised to $1,000. And let me tell you why. You fly into either two different airports, or outside of the city, you either have to rent a car, or take the train into Tokyo. That costs. You get into Tokyo, and the lodging there isn't cheap. The cheapest lodging is sleeping in a tube for a night. And that's not cheap either. And then there, you can't even buy a McDonald's hamburger there for under $15. So you probably have one night's stay in Tokyo before you catch the other flight to this, to the city. So I don't think the city should be cheap. I think the amount should be raised.
All right. Thank you, Richard, appreciate your concern for us. Very much appreciated. All right. We do have some numbers that we can work with, and whether or not Pro Tem Keim and I turn any reimbursables would certainly be our own decision to make, but we do know the cost of the one-night stay. We already have that number, it's $150, and then, so we know sort of, that's why I use the number that I use, and I only put in just the, basically the lodging portion and ground transportation, so, but again, that's a council decision, that portion. Any questions? Okay, any other public comment?
I'm sorry, just reflecting on the chairman, Eto, and Amea Miller that came here in October, and the stories that they told, I mean, outside of the stories, the comment that Amea made that our city and theirs, I think her words were spooky similar, if I'm not mistaken, that was her words, spooky similar, that we are living on a flat plain that's backed up with mountains, and there are similarities in our harbors, and those type of things, was very interesting. And learning also that they are building up their entire city by 40 feet prior to starting construction is just phenomenal to me, that that's going on over there. They gave us a pin to represent the tree that survived, the one, I shouldn't even say survived. There was one tree standing after the tsunami, and of course, it didn't survive because of the salt and pinjment, but that was their, that was their symbol that not all is lost. So if there's any education to be had, anything to be learned from two different people, or two different groups of people, I think we've found it. So it was with maybe a little bit of jealousy, I will make a motion that we authorize the mayor and Pro Tem to represent the city in a sister city delegation to Rikuzentakata, Japan. Did you get that, Mr. Weir? Rikuzentakata, Japan? February 10th through February 17th, and also to authorize eligible travel expenses not paid for by Rikuzentakata, Japan, to be reimbursed by the city, up to $400 per city council representative.
All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Proudly seconded this.
All right, have a motion and a second. Any final words, council? All right, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Keim.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes, very good. And we are looking forward to going, and it is certainly my hope that at some point in time, this entire council will have the opportunity to travel and be a part of this ongoing sister city plan. There is, it, I'm not sure I would have used the word spooky, but there is certainly a connectivity that is unmistakable between these two communities, and the geography and everything else. So I'm looking forward to what we can bring back, and certainly looking forward to the engagement this year when that group comes. And there's going to be some significant requirements on our part to make sure that we are good hosts to a group that large. So we will be calling upon all of you and all of your connections with everybody to roll out the red carpet for our friends from across the ocean. All right, we are at the end of our agenda, and so I will, do we have any legislative matters that we need to be reminded of tonight? I don't have any. So we, city manager report? Mr. Weir, you have something you wanna share with us tonight?
I do, actually. Mr. Taylor reminded me that we have a planning commissioner that recently resigned, so we do have an open planning commissioner spot. I believe Planning Commissioner Williams relocated outside of the city, and so we have a vacancy, so we'll be looking for a new planning commissioner.
Okay. Anything else you wanna give us tonight? Okay, council, Mr. Greenow?
I have two things. I had a meeting with the Delnoits Hollow Waste Management Authority on January 16th. Thankfully, we have a new buyback center that was opened by Hamroad WSG in January, and so now we can receive that 10, 5, 10 cent, whatever it is, from CalRecycle, back for, I think it's 10 cents. But anyway, we can receive that back by taking our bottles and cans down to the fairgrounds. I also had a LAFCO meeting today at 4:00. Went well, nothing to report. Although I do have one thing to ask from Linda Weaver about the finance report that we get quarterly, or, I should've said this earlier, it was the budget actual. Can we possibly include in that the city debt, the total city debt, just a little blip, you know, in the report, every time we get that report? Just a recommendation?
Counsel Finewood, asking staff to look into that?
Sure.
Okay, do you look into that and see how that might play out? Thank you. All right.
Thanks, that's it.
Mr. Short?
On the 17th, we had a Red River Coast Transit Association meeting. I'd like to congratulate our new chair, Madam Pro Tem Heidi Keim, and Vice Chair Lori Cowan from Supervisors. Not a lot to report from there, other than by the end of the month, we should see a bus stop constructed, or completed, near Safeway, which will make the transfer of passengers much safer at that location, and keep our buses going on time. So.
Very good.
That is all from me, sir.
Mr. Follman?
On the 10th, I attended the Delnoit Local Transportation Commission meeting, where we adopted the 2018-19 overall work program. And then this last Saturday, I was at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Banquet. Other than that, no major updates.
All right. Pro Tem Keim?
I too attended all of those. Funniest thing, I saw you all there. Yeah, it was a great time.
All right. We had an Oversight Board meeting on the 10th. I did attend a chamber seminar luncheon, which was interesting, because Kevin Hartwick and Matt Wakefield presented about the changes to the new tax law, and how that may affect us, and what I thought was a very informative presentation attended. And I know a couple of you also attended the Martin Luther King Junior Unity Day Rally, and that was an interesting event, very well attended, and I think it was a, I personally think it was a positive thing, though I know that because there was some difference in opinions that were expressed by some there, that that was, maybe felt like it diminished the event. I would disagree. If there's an opportunity for people to voice a dissenting opinion, what better day to do that than on Martin Luther King Day? I know that they were frustrated, and I don't think that, I don't think it was out of hand by any means. I know Chief Mensel was there, and he wouldn't allow it to get out of hand. I know we, I didn't feel like anything was, but that's just me. I think when young people want to express themselves, I'd rather than be in a forum like that expressing themselves than outdoing damage and creating havoc as they could have. We had the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. It is good to have the buyback center. I will just give a plug for those of you who might be watching or watch this later. If you haven't heard or experienced this yet, all those caps need to come off those bottles. I know that some of you used to do that at Gealindra's, and nobody said anything to you about it. The caps are recyclable in your regular recycling bin. They are not redeemable. So you take the caps off, otherwise you're gonna get over there, and they're gonna make you take all the caps off while you're there. So I just encourage you to do that. I did spend a little over an hour on K-Fug last Wednesday, talking about all things cannabis, which was an interesting thing. We had a bunch of other people on the line calling in, and then I left when Jay Serena showed up for the county's portion. So we tag teamed that. And I had, we did have a LAFCO meeting today. I've also been assigned to or asked to join the Cal LAFCO Financial Ad Hoc Committee, where we've been talking about the funding of the whole LAFCO process through the state of California. So. I do have one question for Mr. Weir, and I should've asked you about it ahead of time. Do you have an anticipation on when you may be bringing ordinance 801 back to the council? Is that something the staff is still working on? That was the streets and the sidewalks and gutters? Any idea when that might come back?
That is something the staff's still working on. I would anticipate a meeting in March at this point.
Okay, good. One other thing, because we had LAFCO today, George Williamson, as some of you know from staff standpoint, he's already begun working on our municipal service review, and has asked to give an informal presentation to the council about the review. And his availability is to be able to come on February 5th. So if we can place that on the agenda, he would appreciate that, so that he can give a presentation to the council. He just gave me that information today. Okay.
See a problem. I do have one other item, if it's all right.
Yeah.
Wanted to inform the council that the culture center has been rented for the next four weeks straight, and that is in regard to the new Netflix production that is coming to town. It's, I believe it is, Bird Box is the name of the movie. It's gonna be starring Sandra Bullock, John Malkovich. So they have rented the culture center, they only plan on using it just a few days out of that time period, but they're gonna be shooting up on the Smith, and due to our sometimes unpredictable weather, they're not gonna be able to shoot every day. So when they can't shoot, then they're gonna use the culture center, and they'll have it as a sound studio. When they do that, though, they've informed me that they're gonna basically set up Base Camp, is what they called it. And so Base Camp is several dozen trailers, up to eight semis, and so as such, when they use it, we're gonna have to shut down Front Street to accommodate this. So we've let a lot of the local businesses know, we've informed the chamber of this. We don't know exactly which days those are gonna be, but as soon as weather hits, they're gonna give us a call. So that's what city staff has been doing, and some exciting times. They are estimating that over 300 people will be in town. They have booked out a lot of the motels, and are gonna be eating at the restaurants, and hopefully bringing a lot of money to this community. So it's definitely good to have.
That's great, awesome. All right, any final words? All right, we will stand adjourned until February 5th.